Welcome, everybody, to the special board meeting tonight, February 9, 2018. We have a couple items that we're going to try to get through tonight, the first being the consideration of the draft. We're going to be looking at the conflict of interest policy tonight as our first item of business and then convenient to executive session to discuss our CEO's performance evaluation for last year. And then we'll come back out of executive session and set performance goals for this year, 2018. So I don't have any other comments, except we have a lot to do, and I know we gave ourselves a lot of time, but it always never seems to be enough. So if I could have a motion to adopt this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
No, without objection? Any objections? Okay, without objection, the agenda is approved. So now we'll go ahead and move into member comments. I saw that three people had signed in. I don't know the order. So if you know the order, if you were the first one, why don't you go ahead and stand at the podium, tell us your name and address. And you have three minutes.
I'm speaking on behalf of Rescue Reston.
You have five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is John Pinkman. I live at 2188 Gulf Horse Drive, and am a co-founder and a director of Rescue Reston. Sherry asked me to consider running the board. I told her that was not something I wanted to do. She asked me to reconsider. I did, and now I'm running because I think I can contribute a positive change to this community. With my understanding that the election at Rescue Reston was more of a job application than a polarizing political contest, perhaps I was a bit naive. Recently, we've seen in print a persistent rumor that confused RA with holding in support to Rescue Reston if our organization didn't cooperate with RA in certain issues. I've attended every meeting between Rescue Reston, past RA board presidents, and staff. Not only did that not happen...
Not only did that not happen, it is laughable to even consider that anyone would suggest such a thing. Kate Folkerson and I attended every meeting. There is no disagreement. I presume we've put that gossip to rest. During the election process, the elections committee has gone out of its way to ensure a fair, level playing field. However, recent appearances may give different impressions. Recently, the board voted to prevent me from volunteering on a committee until the election was over. He did not want to show favoritism. I can accept that. However, the very next day, I was informed that through his social media, a board member set himself up as judge and jury of candidates. I'm aware of the elections committee's response. However, voters may not understand the nuance. It is impossible to separate polarizing statements you make on social media from the office that you hold. The White House has certainly failed with that plan for over a year. In mid-January, I spent more than 10 hours with seven of RA senior staff. I wanted to listen and learn more about their vision, challenges, and obstacles. I wanted to learn how we could help. I found a dedicated, experienced, hardworking, and talented staff and leadership. We think the membership would benefit from knowing the value of all their service to the members. Particularly, I would like to thank CFO Robert Wood for creating the idea of paying off a mortgage, and from his experience, instituting new financial policies. I also attended a fiscal committee meeting. During that meeting, the board members talked about their fiduciary responsibility to the members. Thank you. Well said. As such, the board has received an official report from forensic accountants and a presentation from their competitors. Based on that information, if a board member now has evidence of fraud or malfeasance, it is his or her fiduciary responsibility to immediately present these facts to the Commonwealth attorney's office and not merely engage in comments on social media. If the Commonwealth attorney agrees, we will back you 100 percent. However, if you toss about rumors and innuendo for election polarization purposes, that may only achieve in a personal libel or slander suit. Reston has serious issues, serious threats from out-of-town sources. Corporations want to destroy several hundred acres of open space recreation. We have external pressure right now to increase unwanted population and density. In order to preserve the historic values of Reston, we need to unite in spirit and work together. In the election instructions, Kate offers some wise counsel from the benefit of her 26 years with RA. Be responsible and prudent about what you say, because you will have to work together as a team after the election. I thought that advice was particularly important, because I spent my entire career building teams. It's been my experience that divisive teams that don't trust each other are not likely to succeed. I think there are some opportunities for positive change. Leadership begins with listening to people. On Wednesday, I proposed an annual leadership summit between RA, Cluster, and condo association leaders. Listening to each other creates trust. Listening to others' challenges shows respect. Learning about each other's problems creates solutions. I am confident that we can work on that proposal together as a united team. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Rick Hamilton?
Rick Hamilton, 12629 Thunder Chase Drive, Reston, Virginia. We have two topics to discuss very briefly today. The first is that a couple years ago or so, I attended my first Reston Association board meeting. And the reason I went was the main purpose of that meeting was conflict of interest was on the agenda. I was appalled by the conversation, quite frankly, that occurred during that meeting. Some board members didn't even think the topic was worth discussing. I think and hope we are past that now. So, second, the ongoing discussion in Lake House and its potential impact on, potentially on several or some Reston Association employees. Once again, I'm appalled, but it's different reasons. I briefly watched the trolls on the Internet spewing their hateful and unsubstantiated charges about various people and things. I read the reports again, and again, I see what appear to be unsubstantiated reports, opinions sprinkled throughout the words. I was and continue to be unsure what really happened and why. Was it human error, process failure, inexperience, or lack of experience, non-feasance, and all those other feasance words, and so on? Just not clear. And the reason why I'm unsure is that there are missing or misleading facts being said, too many opinions, and a lack of direct rebuttal by those being attacked and impunged by these words. That said, my request is simple, and it is for a simple reason. The reason is, we need a strong, united Reston Association voice to represent our interests with the county. If you appear to be in turmoil, you will lose credibility, not only with your constituents, but with the county. We cannot afford that. My request is that you act on facts, not feelings or innuendo, and that you allow those involved to defend themselves, if necessary, publicly and where possible. I've not seen a complete timeline of the events, including clear, relevant factual data, not unsubstantiated comments, rumors, and so forth, on who decided what, when, and the basis or rationale for the decisions. Would be useful to have as we move forward, if for no other reason than to document lessons learned. If the process isn't well documented, or if it is and wasn't followed, that would be very important to know. I can't imagine what a steep learning curve it must be to acquire the requisite knowledge and experience necessary to be able to make informed decisions on this board. I would therefore urge you not to include in this conversation that's going on those who are not directly or intimately involved in the decision-making process, or who came into the process late. I still believe in the premise that one is innocent until proven guilty. I hope you agree in whatever decisions you make. They and the supporting documentation will be made known to all RA members. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Andy Siegel, 2715 Soapstone Drive, Reston, Virginia. I'm just happy to announce that I am running for the one-year-at-large seat on this very board. When I saw there was a one-year position open, I felt very strongly that we need someone with experience in that position. As I see, as I've been on the board from 2011 to 2014, I know myself and I saw many of my peers take at least five, six months to really get a feel for what the position entails. It's a lot of responsibility, it's a lot of learning. So if someone was new on there, that might give them, you know, five months of productivity after that learning curve is done. So I threw my name into the hat as someone who I feel has that experience. I believe I can be, after three years on the fiscal committee, two years as vice president on this board, I think I can be a productive and unifying force from day one. I know this is a tough job. I just want to thank all of you for your service for our community, because it is a tough job, and you guys spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on our behalf, and you have a lot of serious issues that need to be dealt with thoughtfully and seriously, but we're also there to build community. So thank you for helping us build up our community, and thank you for your time and your service on our behalf. So thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Since those, unless you two in the back want to speak, Anna, you're like, nope, Larry's like, nope. Okay, so that's it for member comment. Okay, what's next? So I'm going to turn this over to you guys for the board governance. And thank you, first of all, for putting the PowerPoint together, John, and that helped me focus my readings and thinkings. So thank you for doing that.
I will refer to our North Point District Director, John Mooney.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So today, we're going to talk specifically about the code, the conflict of interest policy, and very specifically on the decisions we need to move forward with it. We're... Let's see here.
There you go. You just got it.
Oh, there we go. Okay. First, let's talk about the present status of the drafts and comments. So you received the committee's last draft back in December. It has six parts. We received comments, which we've shared with you, and I believe are published on the website, comments from Ed Abbott, Steve Cantor, and Irwin Flashman. Tonight's focus is solely on the conflict of interest policy, because we have a very short time, and this is probably the most critical thing. So what we, the ethics subcommittee, and more generally, the board governance committee seek from you are four general things. Give us guidance on key points needed to revise and complete the conflict of interest documents, and that's where we'll focus. Approve initially structuring the code of ethics and the conflict of interest documents as two separate but cross-referencing documents. We may decide to put them together later, but for now, let's do them separately. Thirdly, tentatively plan to adopt the conflict of interest documents at the March 27 board meeting after a public hearing at the February 22 board meeting. It's a very tight schedule. We'll have to see whether we can do that. And fourthly, defer consideration of the balance of the code of ethics, because it's just too long and complicated for tonight. Do you guys agree with that?
Yes.
It's too long and complicated for tonight, or the whole thing?
Those four points.
I think you have to buy all four of them. Yes.
Oh, you have to buy all or nothing?
You have to buy them all.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with these, John. I do have a little hesitation about trying to get this on the February board meeting.
It could be very difficult, Sherry. I agree with you. I agree with you.
That's my only caveat.
Yeah. And tentative, that's why...
I got it. And in bold. I appreciate that. Yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that general approach? So the key guidance we need, and you may have other specific points you want to raise. So basically, we're asking comments on 10 specific points and five general points. The first one is that the draft, let me get my eyesight here. I can read better from here. The draft revision defines both economic interests and affiliation interests, and we call it collectively, simply to having to avoid using both terms. We collectively call them personal interests, which, by the way, is a state, that's how the state refers to them, in the state and local government conflict of interest act. And it requires the disclosure of both in the draft statement of interests. RA's current conflict of interest statement requires, with poor clarity, disclosure of both, but the current conflict of interest policy is unclear. So the question is, should we require disclosure of both? Should we more clearly define affiliation interests? So shall we discuss as we go along?
Sure.
Okay. So you all have before you the documents for the, should I read those definitions for those here? Yes.
Just one quick question. What you gave us as Resolution 6, as long as there's no highlights or red lines or yellow, it is what it is today, correct?
No. So there, no, it is not the same.
Okay. So I should look at it as if this is a completely new document.
So the new document, so it was, so the current Resolution 6 was given to you for comparison purposes. Perhaps we should have pointed that out. Both the current conflict of interest policy, Resolution 6, is the conflict of interest policy, and Addendum A to that resolution is the conflict of interest statement. Instead of that, you have a, behind those two current documents, you have the proposed new draft. So it reads, "Conflict of Interest Policy and Annual Statement of Key Economic and So as you're looking...
That's still Resolution 6, though, isn't it?
It's still, yeah, it's Resolution 6.
Yeah.
The one that's dated, draft 12/28...
12/28/17.
That's the one we're working off of, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when, and the reason we distinguish those, first of all, it's in our current document, but when we discussed this long, long ago...
Seems so long ago.
Two and possibly three board members indicated interest in including not just economic interests, but affiliation interests. And so we included it.
In A1.
I beg your pardon?
In A1. That's the same.
That's correct. Section A1. So should I read that for the folks in the audience here, or do people have that?
I think they, it's in the...
Okay.
They have.
Okay. So your discussion, John.
General question. First of all, I think we should be taking, I don't want to recreate the work that you guys have done, okay? But I'm not committed that just because it was in the previous resolution, it needs to stay, okay?
Agreed.
But we have a lot of definitions in here. In general, can you tell me, are those definitions duplicated from the, from the Property Owners Association Act and the non-stock corporation?
There are no such definitions there. So they define disinterested member, is what they do.
Okay.
So one of the, one of the points that was mentioned in our earlier discussions of this is, it is, it is, one of the limitations of our current one, is that it uses many terms which aren't defined.
Mm-hmm.
And so...
To provide clarity, then?
Provide clarity. And we all know, from the last election, and from the discussion of the soccer field, Lake Newport Soccer Field, there are all sorts of allegations about conflict of interest. And there was nothing to adjudicate what was and was not a conflict of interest. So the committee, which is David and Victoria and I, and then Mike, when we took it to the full Board Governance Committee, decided that having good definitions was a key part of the effort. John?
I'm going to be paying.
Be paying.
So you said we didn't have anything that defines conflict of interest, but in the non-stock corporation act in section 13 dot 1 dash 871, doesn't that sound anal to say that?
Sounds impressive.
It is labeled director conflict of interest.
That's correct. But only the first sentence of that is about the, is about conflict of interest. All the rest of that section deals with the durability of a decision by a board that makes a decision when there has been a conflict of interest. The real work in that non-stock corporation act is done in the definitions where they define a disinterested member. We really want to hear your comments. We really want this to be something that everybody agrees to, so that means we have to have a very candid conversation about whether this makes sense. Mike?
Let me make a candid comment, and I think that you've probably heard this from me before. Let's not make perfection the enemy of good enough. With all due respect, John Mooney and the committee has spent untold hours reviewing, discussing, debating, consulting with not only the board, but also members of the community. And, you know, we need to bring this to closure, so that when issues come before the board, we've got something to act on. And the fact of the matter is, we currently don't. It's so obscure, unclear, you can't act on it. So the intention is to make it clear, decipherable, understandable, so that we on the board know when there may be a potential conflict, when the community knows. So my plea is, let's bring this to closure.
I'll simply point out that the community members who assiduously read and attended meetings and commented don't agree with everything, so... So to take up the point about the clarity, I think a lot of the definitions gave me pause, because I thought it introduced a lot of ambiguity into these different roles. The affiliation interest one, it says, one of the things I think that struck me is, yeah, membership in an entity that seeks to influence the decisions of the association. Most of the entities in this town don't have membership, and you can choose to be a member of them or not. But, you know, there's no threshold for membership, there's not dues or an application or anything like that, right? And so, you know, I mean, I, you know, am I, you know, a member of reclaimed Reston, I'm sympathetic with them.
Rescue Reston.
Rescue Reston, I own the appropriate colored shirt. I don't know if that makes me a member, right? I owe, you know, I don't know, right?
Or a member of RCA whether you like it or not.
I'm a member of RCA whether I want to be or not, right? Because just by virtue of living here in the district.
Yes, exactly.
And so I, you know, I saw that, and I thought, well, you know, in the hands, in the hands of wise and noble people, I understand where this is going. But this can also be a tool for bad. I mean, in the hands of somebody who wants to play gotcha, you know, with somebody who had business before us, or one of the directors, I mean, this could turn into a weapon. And so I, my fear, generally speaking, is in trying to define everything, we don't have a flexible document. We've lost the reasonableness doctrine that a lot of conflict of interest statements embody. And so I, I'll have, with different definitions, I've got similar concerns.
Okay. And if we don't ask them, you mentioned the other ones, please, Eric.
Sure.
Okay. So too vague and open to gotchas. Any other comments? Yes, John?
So hopefully I didn't upset you.
I just wanted to...
I appreciate...
It's been three years, I feel like.
I appreciate all that, and I certainly appreciate all the work you've done. But I'm not going to do point-counterpoint on you, okay? But what I'm going to tell you is, when I read through it, the sense, the tone and the sense I get is, is a concern I have for a lot of RA documents, and a lot of the way we, as a community, do things. And the fact that we react to some behaviors and some specifics in the near or far past, and we go down, we start, we're going down that slippery slope of trying to define everything, as opposed to writing a document that gives guidance. Now, I will, I will yield that in conflict of interest, there are some specifics that we want to add that aren't in the state statutes. But I would submit that if we looked ourselves in the eyes, and we looked at the previous board members in the eyes, we didn't hold ourselves accountable, ask the next obvious question, and to have the due diligence, to demand the judgment, as opposed to trying to do chapter and verse for every possible thing that could happen. Because slipping down that slope of chapter and verse, everything possible that could happen, goes to what Eric is saying, someone's going to turn around as a gotcha, even though the board had the best intentions. So, you know, I was looking for something that was guidelines that said, hold judgment accountable, okay? Without trying to define it, every little element of it.
Thank you, John. If I may just reflect on one thing. And this was another thing that made us very keen on defining things clearly, because our bylaws have a unique provision, that if anyone votes on an item with a conflict of interest, without having disclosed that conflict of interest prior to vote, then ipso facto, without them doing anything, without our doing anything, without anybody else doing anything, they are, cease to be a member of the board. So given that remarkable provision, we felt we needed to be as precise as possible, which is not to say that we're convinced that we haven't been over-precise, but because of that provision, imprecision is not good, and we have seen at this table in previous years, debates about, is this, you know, is this or is this not a conflict of interest?
I think sometimes, in that case, you may not always understand the depth of those potential conflicts of interest. You know, how far does that conversation go to, if I had had this definition, would I have a better understanding of, perhaps, you ought to err on the side of safety?
Clarity.
And say, I may have a conflict. Not quite clear, but I may. So I disclose that.
Thank you. John?
So I have the opposite point of view on that, Julie.
Okay. That's good.
One, I don't want to define that. To me, the onus of judgment is on the individual member. They know more about their personal situation than we do, or we want to know. So they should err on being more stringent on saying, I have this situation, will the board agree with me or not that I have an issue, okay? As opposed to trying to codify it, because we'll never get it all done. So I'm more leaning, we need this. I, you know, I'm not trying to stop it, but I'm just saying, we need more personal accountability and less by rote, chapter and verse definition of that.
Well, I agree on that. I was just thinking that the extent to which, because I do think that what we have had hasn't perhaps given enough guidance. Perhaps, you know, I don't think that, or as you say, board members have not...
Stepped up.
...taken it to the nth degree. I feel I certainly have, in terms of anything that had to do with Rescue Reston and the Gulf Horse. But I'm also sitting here, knowing I had just gone through my own corporation's annual conflict of interest code of conduct, you know, thing, and thinking, well, that didn't take me reams of pain.
You're right.
You know, and... You know, and, you know, we went through, you know, they gave you like scenarios and said, well, what do you think this will be? You know? And you vote. And it was pretty clear, the intent.
Right. Really comes down to.
So just kind of in the interest of providing a grounding to be able to move on with this, just so you know that this affiliation interest was actually, I think, the single most discussed item. It was really, really hard for us to decide. And I think we discussed in our last meeting that John's experience in local government has had a strong influence on how this is, and it's very important that we get your honest feedback, because I think we need to find that happy medium between those of us on the board who have corporate experience and those who have public service experience, realizing that the R.A. is somewhere in between. So we really need you guys to pull us back from the precipice of possibly too much precision.
Per kill.
Yeah, and to make sure that we get to where we need to get. So maybe if we move away from the precise what we're looking at here and kind of get into the concepts and tell us, instead of what we have here, what concept do you think would be a better, a better way forward? Because we are completely open to that.
We got a number of.
Just let him have, and Eric has a comment, then we can move on, John.
I'll keep mine short. Common sense, judgment, self-declaration, ultimately it comes down to training. You know, if people by themselves are trained enough, right, and they self-declare, right, you won't have so many, all these different issues. We don't have to get to the precision, the types of precision that you're getting to, because we'll never catch everything, right? Ultimately, it's a question of judgment on the part of the people who need to step up, and if an issue comes up, they need to, and that really comes with the type of training that Julie was talking about. And that's what happens in corporations. You go through these, you answer a bunch of questions, and then you either pass or fail, you know, and then you have to go and retake it. I think that's, basically, even if it is simplified from this, I think that's okay, from my perspective.
Eric?
So I wanted to echo that. I mean, in government, it's the same way, right? We have, you know, a broad call to, you know, to judgment and reason, right? In terms of, there are some definitions. I mean, some of them are codified and reflected in conflict of interest. But it's, you know, it's a lot of training, making you a smart arbiter of whether that conflict of interest exists. I think in the past, this board has, you know, I think the problem wasn't that we didn't know what they were, is that I think the board didn't do what it needed to do.
And the expectation of each other.
Right. I, you know, so I manage a large contract at work. My conflict of interest statement that they make me sign is two pages. I mean, and it's a contract larger than the rest of the association. This is enough, and it speaks of reasonableness, it speaks of general guidelines in terms of when I would be impartial or divided loyalties, financial interest, personal relationship, outside business relationship, that sort of thing. And beyond that, it's up to the general counsel, to me, you know, to make a decision on that.
Yes, that's absolutely right.
Okay, John? Oh, David?
Well, it's very interesting, because I think, as John said, we were so concerned with the drastic punishment, that we were trying to be as precise as we could be. But to your point, John, and to your shridhar, what that really calls for is, because of the drastic punishment, you've got to step up. You have to be self-aware, you have to cover yourself.
Yeah.
So maybe that's kind of where we ought to be heading.
Okay.
That's the piece that I'd like to see from an application.
Again, we're not resolving it, you're giving us guidance to come up with another draft. So let me just have a show of hands on number one. How many would like to include personal interest as well as economic interest? I will tell you that local governments only require economic interests. How many want only economic interest?
Only economic.
Only economic.
Only economic.
I'm sorry. Two? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think as a place having that in there is.
Okay. Second one is, we distinguish between family member and immediate relatives, and one of the reasons.
Excuse me, John, we dropped affiliation interests. You said economic and personal.
No, I said, would you like our revision to only focus on economic interests and eliminate, eliminate affiliation interests? And I saw two hands.
Oh.
Oh, was it affiliation interests?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I'm raising it.
Okay, let's do it again. How many would like to drop affiliation interests? Okay, three board members. Okay, we'll ponder all this. Okay. Number two, we distinguish between, as does the State and Local Government Act, distinguishes between family members and immediate family. Now, the way it works with us, it, we, instead of, it was very, the declarations required in our previous draft, you had to talk about your grandchildren and your stepchildren and your, all this, in your statement of interest. We're saying no. We're saying only, only those who are in your immediate family. But the broader list of family members, you do have to declare if there's a patent conflict of interest. So we thought that was a wise way to do it. Do you agree?
I agree.
Number three, if I can get it to work. Where do I have to point this sucker?
You're good.
Oh, there we are. Okay.
Kate, did you want a minute? Did you have something?
And I don't want to ruin his flow. But when I'm listening to the comments, I'm wondering if, after we get through, because I know that this is one of the questions that, I wonder if really the meat of what we need to talk about is in Section B, when we're talking about kind of when you disclose, because the, and John will get to that in a minute. But I'm wondering if we're just getting so marked down in the definitions that that's really the crux of the issue.
Okay.
So, okay. Number three, we define close economic associates, because that was not clear, many pointed out, this was not clear in our current one. Do you agree with the definition and how it's applied?
Six.
John?
So, I've read it several times, and I can't convince myself one way or the other. You could have a close economic associate because you're in business with them, but they could have another business that you have nothing to do with. And I don't see that distinction. It's like, everything about them is in play because you have a business association with them. So.
So it's with whom they have their own substantial and special economic interest?
Yeah.
And substantial is greater than $500?
We are not at all sure that that's the right number, and that's one of the other specific questions.
So, let me try to be more clear. Victoria has a business with somebody, close economic relationship, associate. And clearly, if something came before the board that affected that, she would declare. But if the person that she's associated with has another business to which she has no association, if that comes before the board, the way I read this, because she's associated with him, she would have to recuse herself.
She would have, she doesn't have to recuse herself. She has to declare a potential conflict of interest.
Close, and then the materiality test, this is again, judgment, common sense, you look at the materiality of it and then.
The state, our Non-Stock Corporation Act and our documents which are built on that do not require recusal. They require declaration of the interest.
Right.
And then we deal with the question of whether they should recuse themselves, but that is a separate issue. But I think if someone knew that Victoria had that, and they said, she didn't say that she has a company with John, you know?
We kept discussing real or perceived conflicts. And it's the perception that gets you into trouble most of the time.
But see, there's one where, I wouldn't try to define it, because we get wrapped around this axle. I would expect Victoria in that hypothetical.
To be an adult.
To be an adult, and do it, it needs to be done.
Which is where I see the affiliation clause get all convoluted.
Again, we felt that clarity was important, because not all adults see things the same way.
The easiest thing to do is the right thing. Step up and disclose.
People have different definitions of right thing.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Are we totally, how would you like to deal with chief, close economic interests? So John would like it more general?
I concur with that. I think as we seek to rigidly define it, I think we lose our, we lose the elasticity of reasonableness and judgment.
Okay.
I found myself writing down that I have a mortgage with BB and T. And it's substantial.
You'll see, that is not, that is not included.
The Southlight branch?
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
But it's, I mean, you know.
So loans from Reston-based person or entities on terms more favorable than those available to the general public?
Well, I guess it depends on the general public's credit rating. No, hold on, hold on. In the hands of, in the hands of a malicious human being.
A similarly situated person, anyway.
I understand.
So, real quick, so we can move through, because we're not going to finish.
So you guys are looking at us to draft this in a similar way, that you would, a non-compete clause in a contract, where someone will find a way to define it in such a way to make it precise yet imprecise, so that you have wiggle room? Yeah?
Well, how many, how many would like a simplification of close economic? How many want to get rid of it? No one wants to get rid of it. How many would like a simplification?
Five.
How many would like a simplification?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, four. Okay.
I can make it five.
Okay.
What I think I'm hearing is that it should be written in lay terms, so that.
Yes.
Board members and the community understand.
Right.
Okay.
Especially the community.
Yeah.
We need to, they need to entrust, they need to, they need to feel that we're adults and we're going to hold each other accountable for being adults.
So, again, number four, material and immaterial, we have the current threshold of 500, is that limit still cor-
I believe it's very low.
It's very low.
I, we agreed, but we didn't want to change it without asking you.
Yeah.
It's so easy to.
So, the state has varying limits. So for example, most of them, most of them are about $5,000.
Yeah.
That might be a little high.
If you look in the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest.
I thought that felt more in line with.
5,000?
What a material interest might be.
Okay, okay.
I would add a calendar timeframe to that.
Say that again.
5,000 over 14 years, makes no sense, right? It's too low. So I think I would say in a calendar year or something like that.
5,000 in a calendar year.
Something that.
Okay, okay.
Right?
So, number's five. So, we, in order to give visible, make visible our concern about this, we drafted a little thing here on what to go through. So it is Sections, what is it? Section B1.
B5.
B5.
Yeah. I would suggest removing B11. I feel that might be, might become cumbersome and rote. Anything we do that's rote starts to lose its impact and meaning.
Okay. So, how many agree to remove the reminder?
I do.
I do.
I don't mind once in the, at the beginning of a report meeting. It's not a bad idea.
I mean, as a general statement at the beginning, the president would.
As a general statement, you know, just like we read out the address, you know, people come and recite their address, right, just, you know.
And like we'd come out of an executive session.
Beginning of the meeting is, just, you know, it gets people thinking for a second.
It's so basic. I mean, it's like.
Right. Remind you to be honest, right?
Yeah.
No, even if it's a, it's a statement that says that, remember your, you know, your conflicts, if there are any conflicts, please disclose them.
If we have people who have trouble with that, then they've got, we've got bigger problems than a vote on an issue.
Okay, so, we got four people want to get rid of it. Okay.
Kate, do you want to?
The reason why we suggested it, it's something that we see the Board of Supervisors doing, you know, before they take a vote on some things, and they, you know, they take votes on big things. But I, I like Shridar's concept of, kind of at the beginning of the meeting, don't forget directors, you know, it's a, it's a good statement for the president to make.
Kind of just a general statement made.
And it's good for the public to hear, to see that as well.
It's like the cleansing statement of the day.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
So practice more than codified, maybe.
Or just say, at the beginning of every meeting, the president shall.
At the beginning of every meeting? How many would support that?
But not at the final vote.
It's a quick one, just like all the other comments you make.
Well, I think it goes in line with. Fine, when the president begins the meeting, there's certain standard statements she makes about.
Okay, moving right along.
Thank you.
This disclosure, in any matter scheduled, be considered by the board, any director has a personal interest in the matter, should disclose those personal interests at the meeting before participating in discussion or voting on the matter. And then, Kate, do you agree that it's insufficient? The state practice is, says this, that mere abstention is not sufficient. So if I have a conflict of interest, I do not suffice, I do not satisfy my requirement to disclose simply by abstaining from the vote.
Correct.
Agree with that, agree with that.
Okay.
It has to be.
You may also choose to abstain in addition to your disclosure.
So, number four, determination of conflict status after disclosure. So if I disclose that I'm a partner in a business, but I say I don't think it constitutes a conflict, so I have an interest, but I'd say it's not a conflict, do you agree that the board should vote on whether or not they judge it a conflict?
So I actually would remove four and five, or consider removing them. Because from four, once you take that information, when you go to five, you can determine it's a conflict, and they're allowed to vote or not vote, or recuse themselves, or abstain. Right? I mean, so in a sense, the net result of four and five is anything under the sun, right? They can, you know, we can find that that's a conflict, and they can still vote.
That's correct.
Right? Or they can not vote, or they can recuse themselves, right? And they can do that whether we find that or not. And so I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we carried out four and five, that, you know, taking a few minutes of our board time, right? When we get to the end of that, nothing has changed from where we started.
Okay.
I also think the amount of time it might take to delve into, get enough data for me to vote on whether you should vote.
Right.
As opposed to, we're holding ourselves to a standard, that if I feel it's important enough for me to disclose or accuse myself, again, I should do that.
Okay, let me ask this question. Do, the last sentence, do we want, do we want to strongly encourage people to recuse themselves from discussion and voting if they have a, if they have a strong interest?
My opinion is, they shouldn't vote if they've declared they have conflict. But they certainly can participate in the discussion to give what may be a countering opinion or perspective, for the consideration of the other board members.
The enabling legislation in the Non-Corporation Act does not prohibit them from voting.
Right.
I would be concerned if we're making a rule that goes above the authority that's stated in the Non-Stock Corporation Act, because if the Act says that the director can vote, and you're taking it away by resolution, that might get us into trouble. So, the strong, I mean, I don't disagree with you. If somebody's got a conflict, they should, they should not be voting on a matter. They should contribute to the conversation maybe, but just, and not say anything.
Again, this was like a little bit of a tough point for us, because there's the idea that if you have a conflict in your discussion, you could be steering the conversation in a manner, in a manner that is really not appropriate.
Right.
And that possibly the other side of the conversation doesn't have an equal advocate.
Well, I would submit.
So it was a tough conversation for us to have.
All right. As the advocate for less behavior direction, a member of the Board, if that is happening, then it's incumbent on either the president or a member of the Board to call order on that.
Okay.
We don't do that enough in the past here. I think we do a better job of it with this Board.
We will draft, we will strike those.
But I also agree with Kate. I mean, I'm sure we have plenty of places where, on review, we might find our resolutions are
Going beyond.
Are going beyond the overarching statute. And as we find that, we should fix them. So from that point of view, I would take back if I said anything.
I'm not sure we're prohibited from it, but anyway, it is not explicitly permitted.
The key point is to declare the conflict at the outset.
If the person doesn't declare a conflict, but another board member knows there's a conflict, what does that look like?
I'm sorry, Sheri, I was not paying attention.
Because we've had this, there's been two of us that were on the Board when we had this before, where somebody didn't feel it was their conflict, but there were several members of the Board that did feel they had a conflict.
So, the interesting thing is the Non-Stock Corporation Act says it's the disclosure of an interest that has to happen. Whether there's a conflict, we try to resolve that. The section that John quoted from Section 13 da-da-da-da-da, most of that is what happens if someone who is not a disinterested part of a director does vote. And it says, you know, what votes would be valid and invalid. Number six here, not number six up there, but number six in the proposed draft, says no action shall be taken on such a matter except by affirmative vote of a majority of the disinterested directors. That's right from the Act. But then do we say then serving, or should it be voting? So in other words, is it a majority of nine, or if we're down to eight, a majority of eight, or is it a majority of those voting?
The Act says serving?
Huh?
The Act says serving? Or does it not say?
Does it stop at the disinterested directors?
The Act doesn't say. So I think it probably can be inferred that it means those voting.
I think it does, because then...
That'd be how I would infer.
Okay, we'll make it voting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Number seven on the screen, new rules for disclosure of conflicts of interest in official actions other than votes. So if you look at Section A19 here. So it defines official action and basically says that there are ways in which board members can participate in actions which are very important for Reston Association, other than voting on a board, on a board motion. So you can read the list of them there. One of the reasons... So, actually, official action, this is out of the state regulations too. And the point is that there are many ways to advance your own narrow interests, not necessarily in the Board's interest. You know, if I push a candidate for a position...
So how does that differ from the overarching statutes?
The what now?
How does that differ from the overarching statutes, the language we have here?
It is not, the statute does not talk about any action except for voting on, voting at board meetings.
So this provides a little bit more definition, and frankly, in lay terms. And I think it's consistent with the other things that we've been discussing. It makes it a little bit clearer.
I mean, so for example, if my son has a business, I could go to rob and push him to get a contract, you know, with Reston Association, without disclosing it.
Which paragraph are we?
You're suggesting that that's three.
It's A19.
Okay.
And then, and then later on in C, you get the kind of disclosure that you have to make in such an official act other than a vote. Let me ask two questions. A, do you agree with the general point that this should be covered? And B, what do you think about the particular form? So let me ask, do you agree that our code of, that our conflict of interest policy should cover official acts other than board votes?
Yes.
How many would agree with that?
Would agree with that. I'm just trying to figure out if
So Sridhar and I...
Why you think it's not already covered?
I think we're trying to be, it goes back to that explicitness, like if, so Sridhar and I have a tendency to review the contracts that come up. And so I wasn't involved in the decision as to who the contractor should be, but say my employer becomes the contractor, I need to point that out and I should not be discussing the contract, right? And it goes back to reasonableness. So again, this is where we kept tripping over ourselves of like, we're adults, we have brains, people have confidence in us to take care of things, and we really should be able to do it on our own. But we weren't confident that that had been enforced in the past.
Plus, there were no provisions for a disclosure. To whom do I disclose in such a case?
That's an easy part, yeah. I think it's really stepping up and disclosing it. That's the thing that people need to do. It's pretty easy to tell the full Board or the president or the CEO, right? I think, yeah, that training is what's most important.
Yep, true.
And I think it goes beyond votes, which is what your question was.
So how many, how many agree that we should do something beyond mere votes?
I do.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll keep working on it. We need to move.
Number six.
So requirement for filing and updating.
Well, I mean, I think we skipped over number six from the previous slide.
On the previous slide.
Did we?
Yeah. I think I was confused at the beginning. I was looking at the material economic interest clause.
Well, actually, I think... Yeah, no, we did handle number six. So, it had to... Oh, no, 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 B9.
You mentioned it as...
No, we didn't. You're right, Eric.
Well, you mentioned it without citing it, and we all agreed with it.
That's right.
So it simply says, it simply lists what we already have, namely, it's an ipso facto...
Right.
It's deemed an ipso facto deemed resignation. It's not an expulsion, it's a resignation. The question is, then, we added number two. Oh, it asks, it says if an apparent failure to disclose becomes known, the director in question, and if the director in question disputes that it qualifies as a deemed resignation, then the rest of the Board shall apprise itself of the relevant facts and make a finding on the deemed resignation.
Oh, my God.
And we had that situation.
Great.
And we had no way of resolving it. This tries to come up with a way of resolving such a thing.
And where's that resolution, do you see?
That's 91.
91, yeah. It's reflecting how do we determine in the deed where it says deemed resigned, that the rest of the Board is going to have to say, yeah, that's a conflict. And two-thirds of which then...
Well, who's saying, oh, because the Bob says two-thirds?
I mean, we had a situation
Right, I recall.
In the recent past where a board member was not sure or did not feel that something was a conflict.
Right.
So we would have had to...
We had no way of taking that.
We had no way of resolving the issue. This presents a way of resolving it.
Right.
Do you like that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's leave 9B because that gets into the whole thing about other personal interests other than economic, okay? So let's move on then. Whoop, what did I do here? Okay. Okay, so number nine, Section D talks about filling out the thing, and it also, it talks about amending it if there's a material difference, material change. And then, so this was a confusion. In the previous version of our statement, it assumed that failing to have a complete or accurate statement was tantamount to a deemed resignation. That's not what our documents say. So what we say here is it's a violation of our ethics code and should be treated accordingly.
As a violation of ethics. Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep.
So we're calling it a statement of key economic and affiliation interests, understanding we may drop affiliation. And the reason is, it's not a statement of conflict of interest.
Right.
An interest is an interest.
It's a statement of interest, right.
A conflict of interest is when it conflicts with...
Agree with that, yeah.
Okay. And finally, okay, so we have this provision already. So if you look at C on the revised annual statement of key economic and affiliation interests, you'll see that you have to declare any business interests located in Reston or involved in Reston-based activities in which the director or officer or his or her family members have an ownership interest over XX percent. Such business interests include but are not limited to sole proprietorships, partnerships, corporations. So we have that in more confused form in our current version. So, if you agree with it, should we designate a certain reportable percentage ownership? Should we do, as the state did, they have a $5,000 threshold, so if I have a $5,000 interest, we do it? I think, so what should the percentage be, or should we have a dollar threshold instead?
I think probably a dollar threshold.
Easier to measure.
Yeah, and you can own 100% of something that's, you know, a $100 entity, and you're not materially affected whether it goes belly up or not, right? So...
Here's, go ahead. And Erwin has his hand up, and I'm going to recognize him, but I'm going to predict what he's going to say.
The alternative reaction to that is, no matter what percentage or dollar threshold we choose, I guarantee you, the Board will have to deal with an issue where someone complains about someone being just over the line, okay? And then rocks will be thrown at us if we move the line or appear to be moving the line. If they have an interest, they should disclose it. I don't care how big or small.
Well...
If it's not material, I mean, if it's a stamp clause.
Okay, how do we define materiality for this purpose? Now, we said earlier, we're going to make it 5,000.
Why do you even have to? Why can't you just stop the sentence that has an ownership interest, period?
Okay.
Everybody, if you own 5% of a business...
Erwin has been our main dialogue partner in this.
The protagonist?
The materiality, before he jumps in. The way I would look at this from a materiality perspective, the conflict arises because even if you own 100% of the $100 company that Eric talked about, if that company is actually bidding for a million-dollar contract right from our end, it doesn't matter, you know, the dollar size or the percentage, there is an immediate disclosive element.
But you would have disclosed at that event.
But we do not have had to do that based on other...
That's a process that we always have to look at.
That's an important point.
Because I would set up special purpose, you know, LLCs to do certain things, right? Transactions are always done that way, right? So you have to look at both together.
And just to comment on that, that's an important point, that whatever we make it here, in the disclosure requirement, it's there. But this is kind of to give the public an assurance that they know what our big interests are. It's telling people, okay, you can watch me on these because these are big interests that I do have. And that's part of the public thing.
And it also indicates that you have read the resolution, you understand what you're abiding to, right? So it's a reflection of...
Yeah, so Erwin's point, and I'll let him, you make your own point about if you own stock in a big company, but only you have five stocks in some big company located in Reston, right?
There are a couple of points there. One is you can own lots of stock today, significantly more than $5,000 in a single company, even one in Reston that's on the stock exchange, and it will be immaterial in terms of its impact on that company and the benefit that would derive to you by some action. But there may be a way around it, and you could simply say, okay, if it's stock held in a publicly owned company, then it has to be 5% or more.
Yeah, that's the SEC...
Which is the SEC line in which you have to declare publicly. And the other would be $5,000 in a privately held company. Or 5%, whichever is greater.
5% or 5,000, does that sound good?
In a privately held company.
Good.
In a publicly held company, 5% or more.
5% is a requirement under SEC rules. Any public company, you own 5% here, you have to automatically file.
Good solution.
So that's a requirement for a public company.
Good solution, okay. Yep, okay.
I would leave the percentage, not just the 5,000, because again, I go back to setting up special entities to do specific projects. That's a very easy thing to do. So it may be below 5,000 at the time of the bidding, but if it's a SPV, you're pumping all the revenues into that $100 entity, right? And suddenly it becomes, so from a stage perspective, by the time of the bidding, it will come in less than 5,000 in value. Because the only value that will reside in the agreement, the only value that will come into that company, let me finish that.
Yes.
That's all. Only value that this company will derive is essentially from the contract.
This form is not intended to address that. Stating the conflict of interest at the meeting at the time the decision is made addresses that. Right? So if I set up a shell company, and it has nothing in it and I do nothing with it for years, I don't need to disclose it. The day I bid on, you know, the building where Reston Association is housed, now I have to discuss it here, right? And the rest of that, so.
Okay.
With, same intent, right?
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
Great. Now, so, we got your answers on that. Thank you. So now, in a way, we've already talked about. The next slide, general questions. Is the overall organization okay? Definitions, regulations, and so forth. Any comments?
Aside from I think it's too many words.
Okay.
Yeah.
A lot of words. Can you put it in infographic?
Say that again?
Infographic, picture, a video, YouTube.
We'll do a cartoon version. Okay, any critical points left out that you can think of?
This isn't critical, but number 18, where it defines officer, what, why? Because officers are all directors as well.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, the two are, for sure.
Say that again?
Two officers are.
Yeah, only two officers, so the only two officers need be directors, the president and vice president. The other two can be appointed.
Can be appointed.
Yeah, you just lump them all in there together. It's fine, I was just like...
Any unnecessary points included? In a way, we've heard a lot of things, but are there any things you think are unnecessary that have not yet been discussed?
Nice job, you guys. Get in there.
Good, nice job, guys.
John's got something.
On number 18, CEO, does this not apply to, if CEO is a member of the...
It does not. And the reason it doesn't... And the reason it doesn't, we, we had the CEO in, we took the CEO out. And the reason we took the CEO, CEO out, was that this is, the whole title of this is, it's the Code of Ethics for Directors and Volunteer Officers.
People that don't have HR covering them.
In other words, the other people are covered by employment regulations.
But I would, I would prefer that the CEO, as well as the senior leadership team, pretty much mirror the same thing, even if it's in a different document.
We've discussed that, finishing this, and then moving on to the creation of-
Kate has completely agreed. Kate has completely agreed with that.
Right.
Just want to go back to interests, economic interests, personal interests, and affiliation interests. I'm not sure I like that breakdown, but I think we need to define the interests. And affiliation interests, to me, means, you know, a membership in an organization that is attempting to influence decisions of the association. Could be RCA, could be RCC, it could be-
Rescue Reston.
Rescue Reston, and-
How do you draw the line at your coffee clutch? So it's just a bunch of people in your neighborhood who just sit around and talk about stuff? That was the push-pull.
I, I hear you.
So, I heard, let's ask again, I heard three board members who were uncomfortable including affiliation interests. So, let, let's ask you, how many are uncomfortable including affiliation interests? How many would like to have simply economic interest? One, two, three, four? Okay. So, okay. We'll ponder this. We'll ponder this.
I need pondering.
Okay. So, is it, some have pointed out points of unclarity. In general, is there clarity? Or is it, is, is it impossibly unclear? Or is the problem more complexity than clarity?
It makes my brain hurt to have to read all this, when I'd just like to do reasonable judgment of, of, you know, ethics.
John, I mean, it's just not an easy thing to do, because words matter, and so you put a word in, and it means something, you take the word out, then it means something. So, it's complex. I mean, just in word choices. And I think you, I think we're getting there, by talking about, we want the affiliate, and what does that mean, and family member versus a direct member. So I think, I think you're on the right track. I don't think it's, I don't think it's confusing, I just think it's complicated in that it's word choices.
One of the things I would like to see is, when a new board is formed, that, that time be spent immediately on discussion of what does this resolution mean to everybody, so that you have a common understanding of expectations between you as members, you know, and that you agree that you're going to hold people accountable, or whether or not it's publicly, or you say to them when you run out to the bathroom, hey, you know, I heard that you might be involved in this or that, I know we're going to discuss it tonight, are you planning on? You know? Because I know there were times in previous years when I expected another board member to state they had involvement in Rescue Reston, and did not. And, and I'm left sitting there going, well, aren't you going to? But not really.
I, we don't have time, but I, I recommend for your perusal, page seven of the draft Code of Ethics, which talks about provisions for strengthening the ethical culture, and it gets into exactly this point of training.
Right.
And also collegially reminding one another of our, of our, indeed, of our goal, of our ideals and our rules. So, thank you all.
Yep. Thank you.
A suggestion is maybe the governance committee come back at the March 22 board meeting with updates to share.
Yeah.
Just to keep this rolling smoothly.
Yeah, we can't do this in February.
Okay. Okay.
You should see the agenda, you guys, for February, or it's already going to be a midnight meeting.
Thank you all very much for having read it carefully.
No, thanks, John. Thanks for all of you for doing this hard work.
So without objection, bring back next draft in March 22?
That'll be good, because it'll be prior, the last board meeting to a new board formation.
Yeah. Okay, so we are, if there's no objection, ready to go into executive session?
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Second.
David's second, he always does. Without objection?
Objection.
No, you don't.
I said, I said without objection.
I thought you said objection.
No.
So without objection, we're going to go into executive session. We are behind-
Yes.
-by a tad, so I don't know exactly what time we'll be coming back out of executive session.
Yeah.
Madam President, I move that the board certified, to the best of its knowledge and belief, only matters that were appropriate for executive session were discussed in the executive session.
Second.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Any not in agreement?
Madam Chairman, I move that the board authorize the president to engage special, special counsel to advise the board on issues discussed in the executive session.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass to the end, Mr. Lee.
Madam Chairman, I move that we amend the agenda for tonight to eliminate number E, establish the CEO's performance holes.
2018?
For 2018. I second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass to the end, Mr. Lee.
Madam Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I don't even need to say aye.
Aye.
Aye.